Good evening, welcome to the September 26, 2017 meeting of the Millis School Committee. First I announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. Start with a roll call to my left. Carrie?
Here.
Denise is absent tonight. I'm here. Nancy?
Here.
Steve?
Present.
Jen?
Here.
No teacher representatives. And Josh?
Here.
Jody, has anybody signed in for open session?
Not.
All right, then we'll move to our action items. I don't believe we have the first two items ready for tonight, so we'll move to consideration to approve the June 29 working session minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the June 29, 2017 Millis School Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have the September 12 minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the September 12, 2017 Millis School Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's skip and move down to consideration to approve out-of-state trip to Providence, Rhode Island to the Trinity Theater.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state trip on 12/21/2017 with seven chaperones and 105 students. It's a Millis middle school trip to the Trinity Theater.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we have to approve this because it's out of state. They're going to live theater production of Christmas Carol. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration to approve reduction in fees to the town rec for winter basketball.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve a reduction in fees. It is, what are we reducing them, by what percent?
It's a waiver.
A complete waiver?
Of all the fees except for custodial, is that correct? A waiver of all fees except custodial.
Can I make a new motion? Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the waiver of all rentals fees for Millis rec department basketball, but not for the custodian. They will still have to pay for the custodian, which is our policy across the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Looks like they'll be in the Clyde Brown gym from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and then 8:00 to 12:00 at the high school Saturdays.
And this runs from 12:02 through 2:10, 18.
Mr. Chair.
This one.
I'm just curious, I know for Metro West basketball, we reduce the fees by 50%. Now, they use a lot more the gym space, and there's a lot more time, maybe just because this is less demand on our gym space, that's why we completely waived the fees. It just seems a little inconsistent, so I was curious what people thought about that.
So, I think historically, we've been waiving the fees for the town rec department for a number of years. This was the first year that we even had Metro West come, so they've been paying full boat, so they
Right.
Got a 50% reduction on the fees, the consistency fees. I guess one distinction I would make probably is the rec department is a municipal department, where the Metro West is a private organization, so.
And it's less of a financial hit, because it's a smaller program. All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Consideration to approve a part-time assistant principal for Clyde Brown.
Oh, John.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, Justin. Why don't we do student representative first?
Yeah, just stay solo.
All right, well, the high school open house happened last week, and clubs have started as well. They've, most of them have had either one or two meetings. And then Millis varsity football team won against Dedham on Saturday. It was an away game. And then students have Friday, October 7th off, as well as that following Monday, the 10th, because of Columbus Day. And then this week, the 24th to the 30th is the banned books week. The library is challenging people to read banned books in order to advocate against censorship. And they promote people choosing the books based on what they're banned off of, instead of the plot or anything else. And then the girl and boy soccer teams are playing at Gillette on October 10.
It was originally a different date, it's been changed.
And then Dutch exchange students are in Millis, and then they're staying with Millis students, and eventually those students will go and visit their, the Netherlands. Thank you.
Josh? All right, no teacher representatives? All right, so we'll go back up to the last action item on our list, consideration to approve a part-time assistant principal for Clyde Brown. We've had a couple of meetings where the target of this position has kind of shifted between assistant principal and adjusting hours for, or increasing hours for the adjustment counselor. I think previous meetings, it was listed as, as an increase in hours to the adjustment counselor, where we've changed it such that we're looking at it strictly as an assistant principal position. We've had it requested by the administration on our, on our need list from at least early last spring, where it was either a 1.0 or a .5. Then over the summer, trying to potentially blend roles, but I think we're going to look at it, back at its own face value of the role, and we'll make decisions based off of that. The questions that we've had around this were primarily financial in terms of, can we afford it? What's our school choice? We've, superintendent identified hiring savings coming into this year, as well as lane change savings. So, for people in the audience, each year, every teacher has the ability to submit for a salary increase based on expectations of increasing their education credits. So, as they're working towards masters, as they're working towards doctorate, certain number of credits beyond each degree, there is a pay increase associated with those. Teachers have to submit those months and months in advance of, of the new fiscal year. So, sometimes they get them, sometimes they don't, for whatever reason, scheduling, et cetera. So, there are years where a number of teachers may put in expecting that they're going to get a, a new degree of, new level of education credits. It doesn't happen, so we, there's a savings in the operating budget. We have to budget those every year, however, because if they do achieve them, they, it will be owed. So, there's, when they're submitted for, we have to assume that, that the teachers will achieve them. So, superintendent and the business manager have identified what that value is for this year. I think in our packet, we have a memo on the lane changes, which is $41,791. We also have an updated school choice history through where we would be at this year. There is also a projection for fiscal '19, so for next year, and for fiscal '20, so for the next three years. I think that's all we have in there. So, the question, just want to pull out, so we, just as a frame of reference, so we had a hiring savings identified of $143,000 a couple of meetings ago. We've, I actually brought it, just so I could put all the pieces together, I had a schedule, so I knew where they are, so I'll, we can pass these out. There were some last-minute changes, so some of the choice numbers might be slightly different, but
Thank you.
Yeah, they got one for Jody, too. So.
This is for Josh, just curious. Do you have an extra one?
Yeah. I do, actually, because.
Josh, there'll be a quiz tomorrow?
So, what I attempted to do is summarize what hiring savings we know we've already accounted for, and also look at the school choice roll forward over the last couple of years. And I did include the FY '18 shortfall, because when we went into the budget season, between what we had requested of the town and what we got, was a $185,000 difference. So, we closed that gap doing a few different things. So, if we look at the top left, where it starts with the hiring savings that's already identified, and actually, the second page in this is what Nancy had provided to us a couple of meetings ago, which details out all the specifics of where the hiring savings was. We approved stipend hours for technology technician, a .4 ELL teacher, a .5 kindergarten We increased hours, and I actually think this may have come out of choice, but it's not in the bottom, so it's, it's all in the same, it'll roll in together. Increased the custodian from .5 to .75, and then we established a stipend for a 21st century coordinator. So, that's about $51,000, a little more than $51,000. See, the amount of hiring savings that we have left to work from is $92,500. We have the lane changes that we've identified, which is $41,791, leaving us right now with the current budget projected savings within our budget due to hiring and lane change savings of $134,000. In the next large box, Nancy had projected the three years of projected salary expense, school choice roll forward to show where we would be. I made a couple of assumption changes in that because the, in Nancy's presentation, the retirement, and these are up for debate on how we want to anticipate using them, but it included retirement and reorganization savings over the next two years, and historically, we've needed to use that as, to cover shortfalls between what we asked the town and what we get. So, I just want to be, we want to be conscious of whether we're baking that into where we think our school choice is going to be, or we're going to hedge that we're probably going to need that to cover potential shortfalls. The second thing is, I did a small average salary increase of 3% in the salary expenses based on what we were, what we're charging. So, given that, we're currently, as we know for this year, we're overspending our school choice just on the salary piece by about $132,000, which is a little bit lower than we thought because school choice revenue is, came in higher than what we had originally planned. We were thinking that number was going to be closer to 200 when we
Sure, yeah.
Were entering the year, but due to actual enrollment as of October 1st, the school choice revenue we're getting is higher than what we had planned. But we're still in a shortfall of $132,000, and that does not, that $131 does not include the $84,000 of one-time expenses that we've paid out. In fiscal '19, so for next year, if we do nothing else, but just maintain what we're doing right now, we will further decrease it by a net of $148,000. And then in fiscal '20, we would decrease it by another $167,000. So, it would bring the 2019 balance down to $200,000 at the end of the year, and $33,000 at the end of '20. And that's assuming we do basic, we do nothing, and we don't do any more one-time spends out of the school choice fund for the next three years.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Sorry. Do these choice revolving account balances, the end balances, are those projections, do they match yours?
They will match the top half, except they, yeah, they should match the top half.
They're off by just, they're off by like 1,000.
I think the difference is the other expense number, and Nancy's revised is $83,000, and I had $84,000.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, they reflect the shortfall that you're talking about, and still, the balances, are they correct, or they do not reflect the shortfall?
Though, the balances are correct.
Okay.
Well, the balance for '18 is correct. The balance for '19 is mathematically correct, but it, but the assumptions are different because there's two things that, that in the projections from Nancy's that aren't. So, Nancy's, Nancy's roll forward, they account for hiring savings based on retirements in fiscal '19. So, there's $90,000. If you look at the salary number, from '18 to '19, it goes from 400, goes from 619 to 529. And that's, that reduction is 90,000 of retirement savings of two people who are scheduled to retire this year.
Yeah.
So, what that would mean is, instead of using the 90,000 as we've historically done to cover any potential shortfall, this would assume that we move 90,000 of salary out of the school choice funding source into the operating budget source.
So then, since the numbers are fairly close, given what we know now, the ending balance for FY '18 and FY '19 are fairly close with like over 300,000 in choice, even with a slight, is it cap? That's what I'm not understanding, I'm not sure if it captures your salary deficit.
That one doesn't. The one
All right, so the 529, 911 is exact. Right.
So, the difference
But 300-ish thousand would remain in choice.
Well, it would be 300,000, it would probably be closer to 200,000, because historically, we have not been able to move salaries from school choice into the operating budget due to retirement. We've needed, we've needed those retirement savings to compensate for the fact that the town never is able to provide us with 4% to 5% increase in the budget.
Right, okay. So, that's not, that's not assumed in these projections?
He took it out. Nancy had it in, Mark took it out.
Okay.
So, if you look
So, what would be these revised balances? What would school choice be based on your assumptions, Mark? That's what I'm not understanding.
200,000.
Okay.
The lower, the lower.
I see, okay. And then in 2020, it'd be down to 40, 33, 4,000.
Right.
Okay.
So, again, so the fiscal '20 is three years away, and things change, but it'll be somewhere between, and again, that doesn't account for any of, putting any of this current savings into the school choice account for this year.
And it doesn't, and it's the same Meaning the 134.
Right. The 134 is nowhere in that, in the school choice revolving account box.
Does it factor in tax increases, property tax increases?
It factors in, what that box factors in, because it's just the school choice revolving account. It factors in optimistic 3% growth rate in salaries, and it doesn't account for any significant increase in choice, so that may change, you know, based on students that come in or out. That could hedge.
So, the operating budget, I understand, is separate, but if the state does, I mean, if there's extra funding coming to the town, perhaps we could shuffle some, some of the cost, the salaries out of, and I understand what you're saying on the retirement, but there's, you can only assume so much, but there's the potential, the operating budget, the revenue coming through that budget could grow
In excess of
And offset some of the impact of choice.
Yeah, if it was to grow in excess of 4% or 5%, we would be in a position to potentially move some of these salaries out of choice into that.
Yeah, which is probably not likely. Okay.
Which we've never been able to do.
We've done it a couple times, but
We've shifted things, but we've never, we've never taken full FTEs, we've, we've moved
Transportation.
It goes back and forth a little bit. It's never been a, we're taking two off this year, we're taking two off next year.
Right, it hasn't been a consistent, we're weaning ourselves off.
It's been peaceful at best. We've never moved in the direction of going down to having no, which we will never be able to.
Is there a reason why we haven't done that?
Just the, the cost. We just don't get enough money from the town.
So, the And Mrs. Secretary, what, what was the dollar amount that we're trying to fund for the, is it the .3? Was, in question, it was like 33,000?
So, the, the current request, well, the latest request, the point, and way down at the bottom, I have some annual salary, so the .5 request was at 14,4. If it was a .3, it was 28,80. I then annualized them
Oh, that's right.
Up to a .5 and a 1.0. Now, when, as part of the budget process last year, the original request for a 1.0 was 80,000, and a .5 for 40,000. I did do a little bit of market, just pulling some stuff off. Probably the average salary is probably closer to 90 for an assistant principal
Okay.
As an annual salary, so that's kind of, so that's kind of where we're living, anywhere from 15% of that to all of it.
So, .3 position would round up 30,000?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's an outline of kind of where our school choice roll forward is looking if we don't do anything right now in order to relieve some of the deficit that we have in it. Other things, I dropped down at the bottom, just other things to, to consider. So, last year, we had a $185,000 shortfall. We routinely are at 200 to 300 every year. So, again, I, I put that in there more of the, my hesitation to rely on retirement savings to be the thing that replenishes this in the next couple of years. So, we had the retirement and reorg of 90 and 50 in the next couple of years. We've talked a lot about what type of capital or non-salary expense things should we be trying to supplement in our budget. I went to the technology replacement schedule that Kay had provided, it's not in here, but I, I have it. And over the next five years, and she did a good job of breaking out what was funded by Warren articles, what was already kind of earmarked to be funded out of the operating budget, and there was usually one or two lines that was for school choice or end-of-year savings. So, I took the average of that end-of-year school choice value, it was about 78,000. So, kind of, more of the mindset of, if we wanted to address our ability to, to maintain a replacement schedule for technology, it's probably 78 grand a year. I couldn't find the last one that we had for the facility, so I, but I just threw it as there as a placeholder for discussion purposes of, you know, that's another area that we have talked about needing help, not just in salaries. So, I guess the way that I would kind of frame this, and what we've talked about framing this, is if we acknowledge there's about $134,000, $135,000 in the operating budget right now, the, to me, the first question is, do we spend any of it, or do we just use it and shift choice salaries in there and get rid of the deficit in choice? So, that's kind of question element one. Number two is, okay, to the extent we don't do that, how much of the 134, if any, do we want to put to non-salary expense increases? And then how does all of that play into the assistant principal role, and to what level would we attempt to fund it? I think one of the things, so, so there's the financial piece. One thing that did come out of the meeting that we had, our last meeting here, was the speed with which the meeting and time increase for Mr. Phelps is on the elementary school building project. Originally, when we were talking in last spring and over the summer, we really anticipated that to not be something that kicked in very heavy until next summer, or even the fall after. So, we were looking at this being a position, while we need it, was probably really critical going into next year. That schedule in terms of meetings and time requirement for him has expedited. So, that has changed in terms of the why now, not then question.
Right.
So
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So, when I look at page three of your packet, and I look at the list of items, that, letter that Nancy sent to school committee back on August 29, positions she was hoping to fill, other than the one, looks like parap position that was eliminated from consideration, everything else has been funded on that list of items you noted to be absorbed by hiring savings. And then where the, the adjustment counselor and the principal, those were her top two items. So, just an observation. And
Mr. Chair, as long as we're looking at that
Yep.
Page also, at the bottom, one of the things we chose to do at that meeting was not transfer the savings in contracted therapies, about 35,000 out of expenses and into salaries. So, we left it in the expense side. That savings is a result of, instead of having to contract out for our teacher of the visually impaired, a .5 position, we were able to find a wonderful candidate and hire her .5 in district. So, it resulted in about a $35,000 savings. So, that is, it currently resides in expenses, because that's where contracted therapies are paid from, but it really is a savings on the salary side, too, that we could add to Mr. Conroy's total.
So, that's an additional $35,000 that's not reflected in this first sheet?
Correct.
Which would fund the .3?
Right. It, yes.
Could.
Yes, it could.
For consideration.
We, we do have a couple more hires to, to make. We are, we have hired the .5 kindergarten paraprofessional, and it came in less than budgeted, a little bit less. We have, we're close to hiring the ELL position that was approved, but that might come in a couple thousand more, so that, those should offset perhaps. And then we had a custodian, Paul Sims, who has left to work on the town side. Dale Olson moved into that position, that the, the hours that Paul Sims had, so now we're looking to backfill what was the .75 position. And so, there might be a little bit of salary savings there as well, but we, we think that our, what's in the budget, and you do have that in your handouts tonight, I believe in the purple, an update on where we, where we stand, an update for your budget books, which
Yeah, we saw that somewhere.
It's in your actual packets.
There.
Okay. So we feel like we're pretty close on those. There might be a little bit more salary savings, but we also still need a reading tutor at Clyde Brown for somebody who left to take a full-time teaching position, and the .6 special educator at the high school. But really good news is we found a phenomenal hire for the long-term maternity sub for grade seven Spanish, so we're pleased with that.
Can I ask one more question about the savings that's on the expense side? Is that, so you hired somebody at a less cost, can you just say that one more time?
I'm sorry, which position?
The TBI.
Yes, the hire that you had. Is that a permanent savings every year that we'll see, or is that a one-time savings?
Well, when we develop, it's a one-time savings. When we develop our budget for next year, we will reduce the expense side and shift it into the salary side. So it is a, it, there is some, there's still plenty in contracted therapies if we need to increase for something there, but it's a one-time.
So, just, so when we move that, so we now have a person here who, when last year we had consultants, so did we have the .5 TBI in the budget? So like their salary, so we hired a person instead of the expenses, so I get we should, the idea of moving the thirty-four up into salaries, but if that person we're paying didn't exist in the budget, really isn't that a wash?
I believe that, and I'm double checking as we speak, you're right, it could be a wash if we were just shifting money from one side to the other, but I do believe, and I'm double checking, I think...
But the salary was lost in the budgeted expense, so this year we have room?
No, last year we were paying it as, as a contract expense. We didn't have any, there was no...
I thought it was at a lesser rate.
No, so, well, it could still be netting, but basically we had the budget and expenses, and we were paying consultants. Now we have a person.
So she's moving the, she's moving the bucket, moving the money in a different bucket.
Right. So not a full savings unless we had thirty-four thousand budgeted in salaries for a vacant TBI position.
I thought that person was listed at Clyde Brown, but she might be on the district page. So I believe it is a true savings, that her salary is in the budget and was in the, because we hired her prior to, let me, let me research that, actually, but I do believe it's a true savings versus...
Just moving it.
Just moving it. But let me, I'll get, I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
So we can put an asterisk on that thirty-five thousand, but...
Right, her salary is definitely in the new budget, but what I will research is how much of a true savings there was over what we had to pay when we were contracting out the services.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So as you analyzed all the numbers and figures, and I'm curious what your thoughts are on how we should proceed.
I, I think that there's probably room to have a blend. I, I don't like looking at thirty-three thousand dollars in fiscal twenty. I think that's way too low. I mean, if we look at this, really, the end of next year, we'd be at two-hundred thousand, which is what we have stated, we don't really want to go below anything. That being said, you know, I understand that there's a need for this. There's been a need even before the project. There's definitely a need, and we know there's going to be a need going into next year. I guess I would look at it and say, you know, personally, I'd be looking at .5 or more. One of the reasons for that is because if we're going to post this position, which I think it, personally, it's a position that this district has never had, or at least hadn't had in years and years, I think it should be a position that's posted and goes through a normal, and I would even elevate it to a degree because maybe it doesn't have to be exactly like a principal search in terms of community involvement, but when you're hiring a person who's going to be the number two or the number one face of a building, and the main reason we're hiring it is because our principal is going to be spending a lot more time out of the building than the person in this role is going to become that main contact, I think it should be, again, I don't know how assistant principal searches go elsewhere, to what extent they're the same kind of public involvement as a regular principal search, but I think it needs to mirror that. So, you know, final candidates are seeing more than just school administrators and teachers, that there's some type of external. My gut tells me, and I could be completely wrong, it's going to be a lot harder to hire a .3 than it would be a .5, you know, what would attract people to even entertain it? And again, I don't know that we can do the 1.0, but probably at least a .5 would give us a decent shot at attracting internal and external candidates as it being something more than they're doing, you know, one and a half days a week.
Mr. Chair, I'm curious just with timing, given the time of the year, is it an awkward, I mean, if we need the position, we need the position, but is it an awkward moment to get a good candidate list externally?
If it were a full-time position, I think the time of year would not matter as much, but for a part-time position, I do think it would be, the pool of candidates would be diminished, both by it being after school, shortly after school has been in session, and part-time people are fairly settled in to their positions, I would believe.
Right.
So what would normally happen if a candidate, when we posted, if we posted, have a pool of candidates, then it might be a longer time period for them to give notice in the job they currently have and be able to come to us, and I would work with the other superintendent to make sure the other district weren't left in the lurch. So it might take a little longer on that end.
Has there ever been a funding situation where you can fund the position on an interim basis until you find a full, like, a full replacement of the .5 position? Is that ever anything that's very precedent there?
Certainly, they, they often do that for superintendents. While they do run a search, they have an interim come in for up to a year. Sometimes the interim is, you know, for a shorter period. Inter, just even in Milis, we had Maureen Nolton, the middle school principal, serve as an interim for a year while we ascertained whether that was a good fit.
Mr. Chair, I am supportive of a .5, but I have a couple points that I'd like to make. There's a part of me who wants to be fiscally conservative and take the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and wipe out our deficit, right? I don't like the idea of going down to thirty-three, and we are going to go, we are going to get to that point. We may, it may be off by ten to fifteen thousand, but this is the first time we've really seen these kind of projections in such a clear path. We may be able to move, but we're going to go much below the two-hundred thousand, which is not a policy as far as informal kind of agreement several years ago. So there's a part of me that says, we take the hundred and thirty-four and just wipe out the deficit and start this conversation in January and February when we look at next year's budget, FY19. But a need has been established, and I think it's important that that school has many grades. It is going to get more complicated, and even if Mr. Phelps' time out of the building for the MSBA project is not as severe as it will be ratcheting up, I suspect that a halftime administrator will have plenty to do in that building, considering we've had some staffing issues in that building, and I believe we've had Mr. Phelps in classrooms, covering classrooms on more than one occasion last year. Not that we're hiring a halftime assistant principal to be a sub, but all bodies, all hands on deck. So I am supportive of it, but now that we're talking about the process, I think there is something to be said for, can we look at, can we start the process, see how it goes, hope for the best, but in the meantime, use some of it as one-time expenses, such as, because the other part of it that concerns me about not just the deficit is that we need to do something about a maintenance, facility maintenance plan. And there was, we got caught up in a vortex the other day of, well, is it, is it equipment? Is it repairs, whatever? I think it's a combination at the moment, and I think we don't, we have stripped that number down because we didn't want to lay people off, right? It was always cut the expenses prior to removing a body from a building, and I think we've got it down to the bare minimum. We clearly, that's another line, that if we put a hundred thousand dollars in there, I think we could probably spend a hundred thousand dollars for several years, probably just in the auditorium alone, and in the bathrooms, and in the kitchen, and doing a lot of things. So I will defer, if we do take a vote and go this way, to Nancy and her team on what is the best process. I don't think we should rush it as much as we feel that there's a need to do this, but this should be a public process, and I will push back a little bit on what, and I think you were right there, but you were saying, I don't know how public it has to be, but if in fact we're concerned that Jason will be out of the building and this person will be very often the front person, I think it probably should be as public as a principal's position, which I know the last time was a pretty long process, right? There was a couple different forums. So I want to, if we do go that route, I want to make sure we do it right. I want to make sure we do it publicly. But in the meantime, we don't take the money that we're not spending on that this year if we do allocate this fifty thousand or forty-eight plus and go purchase another salary because we're going to have some savings. Now, I think we should look at, come back to this meeting, come back to this group and say, what can we spend now? Like, what did we, what warrants got knocked off in the spring? What capital stuff could we not, some technology? There's always money to be spent on technology, so I'm not trying to be all over the place.
Can you summarize what you're...
I'm supportive. I'm supportive, but I think there is, there is an argument to be made that if we're going to be, if we were going to take the fiscally conservative approach, we have a deficit. We know we have a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar deficit. We've identified a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and we've met some immediate priority hirings, right, through savings. But I don't, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to push that too hard, but I think we, as a committee, have to at least acknowledge that we are going down, we are kicking the can, not for five years, we're kicking it for two. And I want to make the right decision, but I also don't want to be looking here in two years saying, what are we going to do about, we don't have enough money to pay for salaries? Because that's what it'll come down to. So that's it.
Thank you.
I made multiple points.
Mr. Chair, so potentially we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand left in savings, maybe another thirty-five, and Nancy's looking into that. So the hybrid mark could be for some of that to go back to choice, and .5 of ninety thousand is forty-five thousand, so what's left to go back to choice potentially and spend the forty-five on a half FTE assistant principal? So we could try to minimize, is that the hybrid that you were referring to?
Yeah, like picking a, picking a point of the assistant principal, the remainder goes to...
Choice.
Choice, which...
Would give us, you know, that would adjust your thirty-four.
Right, it brings us, if it's nine, you know, right, if it's ninety, we're at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, which is, you know...
More manageable.
More manageable.
Six fingers.
Less frightening.
Right. Yes, I failed to mention when I said that I'm supportive of the .5. My assumption was that the rest, we're going to just put it into choice, that we're going to, we're going to meet kind of, meet halfway. Or we could look at, or we could look at those other things. I think the safe way is to put it into choice, and then when we have an emergency repair or an emergency purchase, we have a little bit of flexibility.
So my only concern with that is if we only address facility problems when they become emergencies, we're always going to have emergencies. And my thought around that is until more money comes through Milis and there's some sort of an operational override or something, that's unfortunately always going to be the difficult discussion. Which is usually the case in school districts, right? Yeah. Unfortunately, it's sad.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you, we've been fortunate with some of our utility savings due to mild winter last year, thus we were able to purchase cafeteria tables and things we needed because, and of course, the weather seems extremely unpredictable these days. We may have the winter of all winters this, this time around, but, you know, we have, by February, March, we are able often to project out, and based on costs, and do the projections of where we will end up with all our utilities, and thus free up some, some of those line items to address facility needs. It is never a large enough amount to address a large renovation such as sixty thousand for the auditorium. That is, is beyond what we can do, but we've been able to chip away at a lot of the smaller capital needs.
Yes, and we have, and we've made by, but that's still not the same of saying, making a concerted effort to say, we're putting fifty thousand dollars extra into the budget, and that will, for however long we need that, to continue to maintain, improve, repair, replace, and start the cycle over again, long after, it'll continue long after we're gone, right, in our roles, that even when that new building opens up, there's going to be a point where things are going to have to, you're going to have to maintain it and keep it up, so.
Actually, speaking of maintaining, and Nancy and I haven't, but I watched the select meeting last night, and Mr. McKay, DPW Deputy Director, mentioned that he and the town administrator were passing around, or had shown implications of the new stormwater utility, and what that cost would be to the school, and it was not a small number. He didn't say what the number was, but it was not a small number based on what he indicated. So that's something...
The maintenance cost for the stormwater system?
Yeah, so, well, what the selectmen are doing is they're entertaining, and I think it's going to be on the November warrant. it's gonna be on the November warrant, they're entertaining a stormwater, they're calling it a utility, it's a tax. It's like the water rates and sewer rates. This is gonna be based on, and it's gonna be based on?
Square footage of non-permeable surfaces.
So your parking lot for the school, your parking lots, your roof, your walkways. For our homes, it's gonna basically be your driveway and your roof and maybe your walkway. But that the number was significant for the school, they're still working it out, but that's something we need to have on hand.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Sorry, have you finished with your thought?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess, just to sort of follow the path that Steve did, I'm in support of the hybrid approach. I think we have in front of us something that could directly impact students in Clyde Brown, and I think we need to act on that. And I like the idea of an open hiring process for the .5 and having opportunities for people in, teachers in, and those qualified to be a principal, assistant principal, that already work in the school district, and then from the outside. I think that's great. I understand the stormwater issue, and, but it's somewhat of an uncertainty right now, so it's hard for us to make decisions on things we don't know enough about. What we do know is that there's potentially, we do know that there's gonna be direct impact to the students. The number two disciplinary in the school, there's no clear second in command at Clyde Brown right now, and so that's a concern. Maybe that stormwater management is an operational override in the spring. I don't know, once they know the numbers, and maybe it's just a broad override because it impacts the schools and the town, and it's something that wasn't anticipated historically. I'm not sure, but there could be, you know, some case made.
I don't, I think, it's completely unknown, and I haven't even seen what formulas are, and I think there's a lot of questions about whether it's even needed, et cetera. But it would be a utility that they're charging residents, so I don't think.
Okay, that's different then.
Yeah, I don't think it, it's not something, it's, it's, the school and the town buildings are gonna be assessed their share of this utility. What I find a little weird about that is the money that funds the school and the town buildings are the property taxes of the residents. There's no external revenue for the school and the town to go get to cover this new cost, so.
So it's not water and sewer related?
No, it's, it's, it's a, for the new stormwater regulations, for the federal and state guidelines that are still kind of up in the air, there's a cost to building all this infrastructure.
Yeah.
And one way for the town to generate the revenue to cover that, if they don't already have it, is to, one, you would just do a proper two and a half override, or you can come up with a, they call them utilities, that doesn't require prop two and a half override.
You can just executive power.
You know, that idea of, if I don't want a prop two and a half override, I just create a fee and start charging for it so that I can manage it within. That's what this is. It'll just require a town meeting vote to institute the utility.
Still requires a vote of some kind, though.
Will still require a vote, yeah. But, so it's, yeah.
Nancy, are we creating a precedent here that the middle school is gonna want an assistant principal and the high school's gonna want an assistant principal?
We currently have .25 in each of those buildings because Chuck Grant is .5 athletic director, and then the other .5 of his job is as dean of students, which is discipline and for the middle and high school.
Will there be a movement to try to get?
More.
More? I know you don't know that, but I mean, we are, we are now creating a .5 in the, in one building, and is it, will there, will they say, well, we, I need, I could use a .5?
I think, I think not. Mr. Phelps has the largest building, the most involved parents, the most active parents who are, and, you know, for example, the middle school is having their open house Thursday night. Mr. Phelps has step three.
Right.
Because that's just an example that comes to mind. Right now, I love, and I think we all love, the synergy that results from having a combined position, even though Chuck Grant is, is .5 AD, and in all other districts, he'd be a full-time AD. Having him in the building and working with students and the culture that results from this mesh role is pretty powerful, and, you know, I think it has a very beneficial effect on our teams and our culture within the building. So I don't see, you know, if Mr. Grant were to leave, which I hope does not ever occur, but, you know, then we'd look at the model. But right now, it is a shared building, 400 kids in the high school, almost 400 in the middle school, but Mr. Phelps has 530, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm less concerned about the assistant principal and maybe the need for some assistance for our superintendent. That's, that's where I wonder, you know, about Nancy's time, and.
I think it is fair to say that there are a number of places that we are probably understaffed.
Right, those are two positions we've talked about for many years. It's support for Nancy and support at Clyde Brown. Not that the other schools don't need it, but those have sort of, they rise to the top.
I actually, not to completely throw a curveball at this point, so if we do the hiring process in the way we discussed, it's probably gonna take a month or two. That will take us to over November, almost December. $45,000 covers a .5 for a full year. At that point, we'd be looking at only, in this fiscal year, paying for a half a year. If we are going to, this is a question for Nancy, if we think we're gonna be sitting here six months from now, seven months from now, saying, .5 is great, but we really need a 1.0, do we post a 1.0, knowing it's gonna cost us roughly 35,000 to 50,000 this year, this fiscal budget, cost us twice as much next year? Potentially gives us a larger pool of candidates. We would just have to figure out how to deal with the extra 45,000 next year.
We just got our heads around the other numbers.
I'm just, I, no, there's, I mean, the request has historically been a one-point. We, we're constantly sitting here, we hire at some level, and we are almost always asked within relatively short periods of time for additional hours, additional.
Do we need a full-time assistant principal?
Well, that's the question.
Yeah.
Do we?
As Mr. Catalano said, there is plenty of work to be done. Somebody, if there were a full-time person, they would not be twiddling their thumbs. That said, we do have a stipended early childhood coordinator position that is funded through, well, it was funded through the grant, the kindergarten grant, and then we absorbed that into the budget. So there is a little support for early childhood as a coordinator. I, I think at this point, a part-time, honestly, would be sufficient.
But to Mark's point.
Would we get a better pool of candidates?
I, quite honestly, not to drag the process out, I'd rather start at a .5 and then get feedback or hear that it's not working. I'd love to come here, I love your district, but it has to be a 1.0. I'd rather start at a .5 and then we regroup and have a conversation and say, you know what, it's not gonna work as a .5, we have to, is it a three-quarters, or is it all the way to a one? I don't know. We may find the right person that the .5 works. We may find someone in one of these existing buildings who's certified, who becomes a .5, and we backfill their, their current position or half of their current position. So we may, we may be okay.
Yep.
We don't know. But I, I hear what you're saying.
Just to, just to at least say.
To echo Janet, I mean, we literally came to.
Just to take a card off the top of the pile.
I even said fiscally conservative, and then you come in and want to spend another 45,000. I, I'm not opposed to the idea. I think we should start the process.
Just want to make sure we explore all of those pieces, and I like that idea. If we're finding that we're not getting pools of candidates, then we, that's obviously gonna be the first thing that people are gonna look at, is do they want to come for a .5? Do they want to apply for a .5, regardless of whether they're internal or external, you know?
And Nancy, by no means are we, we're trying to create something where you're just spinning your wheels. We don't want to waste anyone's time, but I think we have to kind of let it play out a little bit. You know this, you know the process better than anyone. You'll have a better feel for whether, I mean, we are, we are, and this is between superintendent to superintendent, but we are creating a system where we could be taking a senior-level person in a district in October or November. I mean, they may not want to let them go.
Or it could be an internal person.
And that's right, it could be an internal person.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, and I do think, in some ways, finding a full principal is harder than finding an assistant principal. If we, all things being equal, the time of year isn't ideal, but assistant principals are nice positions for teacher leaders looking to enter the principalship, but they want to experience at a level where they're, which is what I did. That was my first administrative job, I was an assistant principal, and halftime in one building, halftime in another building, and it gives you the experience without the full Impact of the overwhelmingness of running.
You can grow into it.
A building, yes, yeah. So I think, I think it will attract candidates, and then, like I said, we certainly wouldn't ever leave a district in lurch. We work with them to say, do you need a month? What do you need? Usually, most contracts have a two-week or maybe a 30-day notice, but we work with them to make sure they're in good shape as well.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion that we fund a assistant principal at the Clyde Brown, a .5 assistant principal at the Clyde Brown in the amount of $45,000. We don't have to make a motion on the hiring savings, right? The rest of the hiring savings?
Well, we, well, we, we can do one of two things. We can, currently, the remainder of it is sitting in a line item called ed reform, that we can either just leave there, or we can take a vote to formally move at the superintendent and business managers' discretion of what positions, move the remaining balance from school choice into the operating budget as a funding source for salaries up to the remaining balance, so that it's not coming out of choice. So we either leave it in ed reform and deal with it at a quarter transfer or year-end, or we do it now so that choice is.
Sorry, Jody. I'm gonna make a motion, or actually.
amend your motion.
Can I amend my motion, and then I wanted to have a conversation before I started the motion, but we'll, we'll go with it. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to fund a .5 assistant principal at the Clyde Brown School up into the amount of 45,000, and I, second part of the motion is to keep the remaining hiring savings in the ed reform line until a later date, when, when all of the, all of the committee is here, and we can have another discussion about what to do with that money. Hiring savings. The identified FY '18 hiring savings on the sheet, we, I think it was presented last week, as, last meeting as well. And then the remaining money, the remaining hiring savings would stay in the ed reform line until additional conversations with, with the full committee.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
And if I, if I may, just add that maybe it makes sense for that second discussion to occur after all our hiring is finalized, we have set numbers, and everything is.
There's no rush, yeah, there's no rush.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, budget update?
Well, Mr. Conroy gave a very thorough budget update. I appreciate that very much. The CHIPS requirements, you have in your handout, I mean, in your packet, the subcontractor for Tephei Architects, who is in charge of the CHIPS, which Denise Gibbons spoke to last meeting, which is the energy savings, energy, planning a green building. So I provided this again with a couple of items that we've already accomplished, just to show the, the committee the level of, when I counted them up, it's 15 different distinct things we need to do. Some of them, which are in your packet, are just letters of assurance. There will be some activity that we need to bring to the school committee for a policy or of a letter of assurance that needs to come from the school committee. But I'm working with the project managers to, and spoke with Tim Bonfetti last week to see how much of this the owner's project manager can shepherd through for us, because it is somewhat time-consuming, a little overwhelming, and so the, I have to say, Compass Project Management and Tim Bonfetti have been excellent about taking a look at this. He assured me that it shouldn't be too heavy a lift for me, a superintendent, or the school committee, and they'll work with us to make sure we, we do everything we need to do. Some of them, like the integrated pest management plan, we already have, we do that. The anti-idling measures, it's a state law, but there will be some activity that we will be bringing to school committee on that. There's also in your packets, the memorandum of understanding that we needed to sign for an integrated design path for small buildings, that I believe is, is part of this CHIPS process. So you have basically three documents. One, assuring the architects that we will purchase electronic devices that meet the requirements of the E-PET rating systems at a silver or gold level, and that the Clyde Brown Elementary School does not use indoor mobile fossil fuel burning equipment. And then the Integrated Design Path Memorandum of Understanding. So there's, I'll try to, we have a working group meeting tomorrow, going to try to clarify a little bit more tomorrow on what our next actions need to be. Also in your packets, are there any questions about that? Also in your packets, there is the itinerary. Also in your packets, there is the itinerary for our learning tour that we had last week on September 20th, which was very successful. The 15 or so superintendents and another five, six people from the Maple Learn Launch Organization, which is the Massachusetts Group for Personalizing Learning, and representatives from the Department of Education. The superintendents are often retired superintendents. They are the coaches and mentors for the 75 new superintendents in a three-year program. And they came through, visited 18 classrooms in three groups, then had a faculty panel, principals panel, had small group discussions at lunch, informally with our teaching staff. And I must have heard probably 10 times that day, you all in Milis have very much to be proud of. The, they, even though it's early in the year, the third week of school, there was still a great deal of very active and project-based learning, a lot of station rotations where kids were, a teacher was conferencing with a small group of students to personalize their learning, while other students were working on stations where there was technology. And overall, it was just hugely successful. Two of the people on the learning tour with us were Dr. David Doctorman from Harvard School of Graduate, Harvard Graduate School of Education. He's a lecturer there, and Dr. Erwin Blumer, who is the retired chair of the Boston College Graduate School of Education. So very knowledgeable wives, experienced people. And they remarked over and over again what, what a wonderful culture there was, that the teachers were very impressive in how they got big picture, they were reflective, they were always seeking to improve what they were doing and open to new and exciting things. So it was, it was a really wonderful experience, I think, for everybody. Then the other thing is, oh, I guess that's under your report.
We've got the announcement for the Mass, School Committee and Mass State Superintendents Joint Conference, which is the first couple of days in November. I went once and nobody else has been. It's usually a good, it's a good event. You can go one or two days, however many you want. Is that the book? Nancy has the book, if anybody wants to see.
I believe they mailed it to your house. If we do want to appoint a delegate to be our voting delegate, we need to vote that at this meeting. There is a session for the resolutions that MASC puts forth, and that's the first day.
I don't know. Carrie should go and vote. Yes, I never did.
In the way of hockey tournament, that would be...
I think we'll skip the delegate.
Okay.
Great. Then also in here is an update on our subcommittees.
Jody did a great job, there's a couple little edits. Under me, I'm not the board of selectmen liaison.
Okay, is anybody else?
Yes, you, it's the chair is the, the primary, and then the secretary, secretary is always the second.
Okay, well, it's already under Denise.
Yeah.
So just take it out for me.
Okay.
And also, you have me and Mark on a budget subcommittee, we all, so the budget subcommittee should be all SES.
Who's over here?
Yes.
Yep.
You did a real, there was a ton of it, so you, you got 99% of it, thank you.
All right, so is everybody else, was it right?
Yep.
Those are the only two that jumped out at me, I don't know if others looked at their own.
Those are the same edits I made on my version.
It looks a little more manageable now.
Yeah. Subcommittee reports, elementary school building committee?
I can give an update on that. So we had a meeting on, last week, what night was that, Tuesday night?
Tuesday.
And we got to look at some new, some more refined design elements or options within the school itself, which were very attractive. And just some conversations, still very early in that process, but just some conversation around that. And that was all videotaped and should be shown at a later date. And I know that Loring Barnes, she, she did some live streaming of it, and so I think people were watching that live. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my phone. And then most recently, there's an update as of yesterday. Back on August 14th, the elementary school building committee submitted an ENF, which is an environmental notification form, to the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency. And it was, it was part of the process to evaluate the site where the proposed school is, has been voted on to go. And there was a determination that the ENF application was acceptable and that no further environmental study is required. And we can continue on with the project and we don't need to go back to that part of the state review. So that was all favorable and allows us to keep moving forward. Carrie, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
No, I, I think you got it.
School committee announcements, Karen?
I do not have any.
I don't have any, Steve?
Nope.
Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple. We do have, we have had open houses, the high school last week, first and third grades on Monday. Tomorrow night is grades two and four at Clyde Brown. Thursday night is middle school, grades five through eight. And next week on Monday will be kindergarten. We also had a special education open house on the 21st with over 35 people and very positive feedback from that. We have finished our preliminary screening assessments for using Star Math and reading and the current data analysis. Data analysis is currently happening at both Clyde Brown and the middle school to determine the tiers of support. And there will be also about 10 teachers, five pairs of teachers in a co-teaching seminar that is grant-funded, being taught by Dr. Marks and Krista Baglioni, one of our special education teachers. There's a spaghetti dinner on Friday night for the HSA, the Home School Association, this Friday, I believe, at Clyde Brown. And then next Friday, October 6th, not this week, the following week, will be a full professional development day for our staff focused on social-emotional learning and also further developing our learner profiles. That's being developed by our own staff with that PLC group, the school adjustment counselors, school psychologists, and the BCBA taking a lead in developing the professional development for our staff. And then finally, we have, for the first time in 11 years, we have a student, Nick Steiner, who has earned distinction as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, which is quite a, a good, high distinction.
Any older new business? Any correspondence?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, our next meeting is October 10th, right here. Thank you all very much, have a good night.
Good night.